Thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight. I guess first on our agenda is invocation. Pastor Heissam with us tonight for invocation? That's what I have on my agenda.
He's not here.
He's not here.
I can do it.
Okay, there you go. Chase, would you lead us?
Yep, if you all pray with me. Lord heavenly Father, we just thank you for this time we can come together as commissioners to serve our city. We pray your guidance on our decisions and pray that we hear the thoughts of the citizens that are here represented tonight, and we just lift all these things up in your Son, Jesus, holy name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Pledge allegiance. Anybody from the audience like to lead us in the pledge?
I will be. I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is personal appearances. We have with us our auditor. Ted, correct?
Karen.
Karen, thank you.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to be here this evening to present the results of the audit. What I would like to do is, I'm sorry, my name is Karen Lynn and I'm a partner with Burbidge Trayhan. I believe you have copies, is that right, Tammy, of the presentation?
No, you were going to make copies.
Okay, I carried them in with me tonight. Sorry. Do you want me to wait for the reporter or just go ahead?
You can go ahead.
Okay. So what I would like to do is to just go through the results of the audit and you will be receiving a copy of the financial report and also the summary of the conclusions from the audit process. First, our responsibility after you hire us as auditors is to perform the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and also government auditing standards. Those standards require that we plan and perform the audit so that we can form opinions as to whether the financial statements are free of material misstatement, and so we design our audit with that objective in mind. The, of course, the audit process requires us looking at documentation and support for the financial information as well as for the footnote disclosures, but in addition to that, we also look at accounting policies to make sure that they are appropriate in the circumstances and that they're consistently applied. We also look at any significant or unusual transactions to make sure that they would be handled, again, appropriately, and we also look at anything that is considered to be an estimate or significantly reliant on management making a judgment as to how the amounts would be recorded. In the case of the city's financial statements, we have three items that we consider to be significant accounting estimates. They are the self-insured claims that, for which a liability is estimated and reported, the water storage space, and the other post-employment benefit obligation. All three of those, we look at the processes and the accounting policy and the process that the city goes to to record those, and we were able to determine that they are reasonably presented on the financial statements. We also have a couple of audit adjustments that we made during the audit process. These are included there in the attachment for you to take a look at. We also identify what we call some uncorrected misstatement. Those uncorrected misstatements are adjusting entries that we identified, but they are immaterial to the financial statement, and so we don't actually make them as a part of the audit process, but we do provide those as an attachment in the summary report for you so that you can see the types of adjusting entries that we did identify. There are several things that we would bring to your attention and much earlier than this evening if we had had any difficulties in any of the aspects of the audit, policies, estimates, just anything like that, any difficulties dealing with management, any issues that were unresolved, just anything along those lines, we would make sure to bring those to you as a commission at the time that we identified them, which would be much earlier than this evening because we would want to be, to make sure that you were aware of any issues that we have. I would, just the opposite, we had no issues or problems that we identified during the audit process. We did receive full cooperation as we always have, and Tammy and her team and Herb do a great job in preparing for the audit, in working hard all year long and making sure that the books are maintained in a manner such that the audit goes very smoothly. And I always like to remind everyone that the audit process isn't just the time period we're here and even the months before we arrive to do the audit, but really preparation for the audit really is a year-round process because it requires keeping books and records consistently throughout the year so that the audit can go well. And so we thank you, Tammy, for the hard work that you put in to the audit process. We did issue one significant deficiency, and this is related to the adjusting journal entries that were made during the audit process. This is as a recommendation or as a communication that we have had in the last several years. I do want to let you know that that, that the process for reducing the number of audit journal entries has really been improving completely. Back four or five years ago, the number of audit journal entries was much larger and we're down to really just having a couple that we make as a part of this audit this year. So a lot of improvement has been made in that area, and I know Tammy is working diligently to make that comment go away completely in the future. The next item that I would point out is a letter that is on, and I think you have a draft of that letter, that is addressed to our firm. This is management's representation letter. That letter is the final step of the audit process, which requires certain things that we've discussed during the audit process and that are underlying the financial statements to be reported to us in writing, in the letter format. We encourage you as a commission to read that letter. It can help digest the financial information and some of the policies underlying the financial statements, so we do encourage you to read through that. We also believe it can help you fulfill your fiduciary responsibility. So please, if you take some time to read through that letter and if you have questions, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about that.
First time we've seen your reports, I'm sorry, could you direct us to where that letter is?
It should be in, there should be two, or did you receive two?
Received two.
In the smaller document.
Okay.
Page, it's page five. Page four is the, page four is the accounting estimates, and right past page four is the draft of this letter. Now, that letter, once signed and returned to us, will be the final step of the audit process and will indicate really authorization of acceptance by the city so that we can finalize the audit report. And the last, the last conclusion from the audit process is that we were able to issue unmodified opinions on the financial statements, which is the highest form of opinion that can be given to a set of financial statement, and so that is the opinion that you should be looking for. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
It's a lot of information. The audit, at what point does it get approved by the city, by us as a commission, or does it? Talk to me a little bit about the process from this point forward on the audit.
Tammy, I have a copy, Tammy handed me tonight the signed letter from Herb and Tammy of the representation letter. Does the commission normally approve it?
No.
No, okay.
No. This is it. She just usually comes and presents to you, and then that's pretty much the process and tells you, you know, if we got a good rating or not.
So I do have the signed letter, the signed management representation letter that I received tonight from Tammy, so we will be finalizing the report.
So anything we find, and I hear you and I appreciate that we've got good ratings and everything like that, but all this information that was given to us tonight, if we, during our reading in the next few weeks, have a question, is it directed to you, to Herb? How do we resolve questions that might come out of this audit?
And I think that it'll be a comfort, it'll be a comfort thing, and so I have, I'm usually easier to get hold of maybe than Karen, so you can direct it through me, but if you have a question that is pertinent to it, that you feel more comfortable talking to Karen about, you're certainly welcome to do that, and I think, and that's the case always.
Always, yes.
So what you're telling us as a commission is, as we read these two documents, we have something that's a very specific question that we don't feel comfortable asking you or Tammy about. We can, we have access directly to the auditor. Is that correct?
And I think anytime, if you ever had a question about accounting, you always have that ability.
Okay. Okay.
And we, from the audit perspective, want to make sure that we keep the lines of communication open with the commission for any questions or concerns you have at any time.
I appreciate the accountability that that brings, I mean, and the openness that that brings in terms of there's, we as a commission want to do that. How long, how long have you been doing the audits for the City of El Dorado?
This is our fifth year, and we go out for bid, so.
Okay, thank you.
We wish them luck to give us a low rate, or a low price.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to know what kind of, as you led up to being able to give these recommendations, what kind of background it had, so I appreciate that.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to work with the city.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the commission?
Okay.
We have some reading to do, right? Next personal appearance I have is Dusty Davis from Prairie Trails.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Dusty Davis at 2030 Prairie View Court here in El Dorado, and I'm gonna, first I'd like to thank you for letting us be here to propose to the council. I'm chairperson for the golf committee and have been for the last year and a half now, and also we're excited to have Nick Badway as our liaison for the golf committee, so we're relying on him for some good input, and we know we can get that from Nick, so part of the, we were presented a couple of months ago to, for a proposal to consider new greens for the golf course on the front nine for Prairie Trails. The greens are, at this point, close to 65 years old, and I think some information was provided from your packet about just the conditions of the golf course, overall maintenance, other items on how, just the lifespan of golf courses in general, so that was something helpful for us to see as a committee and look at, knowing that our greens are 65 years old. So at this point, over the last several years, I know Jason's a struggle kind of to keep those alive, moving in the right direction, all that, so from a maintenance standpoint, there's been a lot of items there to try to keep those greens alive and all that, so they usually do good in the spring, and by the time the heat hits, they get burned up, and they were not properly built to begin with, so over the course of the last 10 years, we've really seen them kind of decline from a standard that we need out there. And since the other greens were built, 1999, we feel that we need something more consistent with the greens from the back nine, knowing they're in great shape, they do well with the heat, the moisture, and knowing they're built correctly. So a proposal was presented to our committee, and we voted unanimously to approve, to move forward with the greens project for the, for the front nine greens. So Jason did most of that legwork on any kind of numbers and things like that, and we really haven't dug too deep on that. It was something we were just wanting to get this project kind of off and go in the right direction, knowing this is something we feel that is important to the golf course and the community, so.
Dusty, do you have that handout that we had at our last meeting? Do you have any copies of that?
I don't personally, I have one for myself. I have one for myself, and I know Jason has something that he can probably pass out as well, but it basically shows the expected life cycle of, is that what you're talking about, Nick?
Yeah, and that was very, very good information. Is that something that could be sent to the other commissioners and the mayor as an email or? Okay. Because that was, that was good information.
Basically on this, it says greens have a 15 to 30-year life, and these are 65-plus years already, and not actually built correctly to begin with. They've really kind of struggled over the last 10-plus years on how they're performing for the greens concept, so.
Well, and the fact that they aren't any worse than they are is a testament to Jason and his staff.
And that's, you're exactly right, and that's what's gone on over the last several years, is more kind of patchwork just to try to keep areas alive and things that need to be done on that from that standpoint, which in essence costs more money and more time from that standpoint, too, and so some other projects could be done for the golf course, so. So I don't know what was, or what's going to be next on the items, on how we want to proceed with this from a budget standpoint, but it's something that Herb and Jason can present to the council and say, this is what we want to, want to consider moving forward, so. And Jason might have additional information, too, if you'd like to visit with him.
As we consider replacing the front nine, correct?
Correct.
Of the greens, what are some of the logistics associated with the replacement of those greens or the front nine out of commission for, are we temporary greens, or what'll happen with that?
I'll refer to Jason on that part.
Jason Reiswig, 938 West Third. We would do some temporary greens on the front nine. Logistically, if we started this project somewhere around, let's say, an August 1st timeframe, you're looking at about 90 days. It takes approximately 10 days to complete a green, start to finish, dirt work to grass, and then we'd have a grow-in process, and hopefully through the course of that process, be ready to play autumn the following spring. So if we started August 1st, you'd be closed basically for, oh, seven months, hopefully be ready by April, Mother Nature willing.
If you started August 1st.
If you started August 1st.
You can't start it in the fall and in the winter.
No.
You've got to do it.
Correct.
During the growing season.
We can start at any time, it just prolongs the duration of time closed, but if you start it, you know, late August, or I mean, 1st August, late July, 1st August, then you're closed, July, August, September, basically for golf, and then it's cold through the winter, and then hopefully be back open the following spring, so depending on, you know, a mild winter, what we had, hopefully be open middle of April. Is that the handout you were looking for?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's it.
How much damage was caused by the hail to the course?
Quite a bit, but it's recovered now.
Has it?
Yeah. Took about a week, and a few tons of sand.
Can I assume that since you know what has to be done, that you have an idea of how much it's going to cost?
Yes, I do. I've received bids from Wildcat Construction and Prairie Land Works, who's a company out of McPherson, and I've received a bid from a guy that would come in and do the shaping of the greens, but turnkey operation is around $400,000, and that would be, turnkey operation, they do all the work.
Does that come with guarantees that it's going to be ready in the spring?
Probably not, but I hope so.
And I think when you, when we give you a proposal, if you want us to do more about it and hear more about it, when we give you a proposal, that won't be it. And I think this is going to be one of those that it's going to be a joint project between our staff and a private business, and it's going to be less than that, and I think it'll be half of that.
I guess I'm surprised, 15 to 30 years for greens. I didn't anticipate that being so short.
Yeah.
I mean, so how old are our new ones?
99.
99.
The golfers of El Dorado played on those greens for the first time in June or July of 2000. That was the very first round played on those greens.
Seed or turf?
Seed.
And the August 1st is anticipating seed or anticipating turf?
Anticipating seed.
And I think, and I think the conversation, again, the Jason I've had, Jason, big Jason, is turf, and I think that using the builder out of Iowa, does that sound like the right thing?
Yeah.
That we can do that. But the, this is the first step for the commission is advisory makes a recommendation, and that's what you're hearing tonight, that your committee is suggesting that you do this.
Vince, I guess with what Herb said, to answer your question further, there's more of a guarantee laying sod. If you seed those greens, then we're relying a lot on.
Sure, sure relying a lot on the weather, but we also have irrigation. I didn't know whether, a lot of times landscape installations come with at least a one-year stand, beyond that would be obviously up to the maintenance, but a lot of times we see at least a guarantee that you've got your growth and it's going to go. I didn't know whether that came with that or not.
To be honest, well, I haven't gotten that in-depth with them. They kind of gave, the companies gave me quotes on what they thought the project would cost, and that's kind of where we started.
Really haven't gone out for bid, you've just gone, done some estimating?
Have not gone out for bid, no.
And the companies you've talked to, this is rule-of-thumbs type estimating that you're getting?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, it seems to me if, if we're going to do this, if we're going to be going August 1, we need to really be thinking hard about this. That's six weeks. Sooner would be better, correct?
Sure.
If it started.
Sure.
So we really need to be thinking about it, I think.
And I think it'll be an item for you to discuss as you're doing your budgets.
Okay.
That's, that's my anticipation. This is the perfect time, and actually, six months ago may have been the perfect time, but it is what it is, and so.
The visor committee highly, highly encourages the sod project as well versus the seed, so that's something we think, from the weather-wise, and just able to get back in the springtime knowing that we have the sod versus the seed, so it's something we talked about, so.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, next on our agenda is public comment. The floor is not open. Anybody from the public who would wish to come in and address the commission? I think everybody has, there's agendas, everybody has an agenda, and on the backside of your agenda are the, are the public comment policy, so I would encourage anybody to come up and understand that.
Hello, I'm Judy Starant. I live here at 105 Bray Street. I am the president of Kids Need to Eat, and we sponsor the El Dorado Lunchbox Program. So I'm excited to tell you that the Lunchbox Program's happening again this summer for their third summer. I brought some show and tell. The lawn signs will probably start going up in a bit, and flyers are going around. We're a six-week program. We offer free lunches to kids ages 18 and under, no questions asked, no registration, no name required, at our meal site. And our meal site again this year is at the Family Worship Center, which is the old Washington Elementary School at 705 South Atchison. We're there, we're going to be there during the noon hour starting June 29th for six weeks, 12 to 1. Any child can come and pick up a meal sack and select meals to take home and eat at home. They'll take home a lunch, and they'll take home a breakfast, and they'll take home some snack foods, and on Friday, they take home a weekend backpack that has six meals for the weekend for them. So many of you are aware of the need for this program. That's evidenced by the high number of students in our local schools who are on the free and reduced-price lunch program. And at least one of our schools is getting really close to 80% of the kids. And so our goal is to feed the kids during the summer and offer them some enrichment activities at the same time, feed their brains and their bodies, so they can have the maximum developmental gain over the summer and hopefully go back to school in mid-August, better ready to learn. The YMCA is going to partner with us this summer, and they're going to be out at our meal site three times a week, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, to offer games and activities for kids. Every Tuesday, kids get to pick a free book to take home, a very popular event that we've had since our beginnings. So we're going to have a crafts day, we're going to have a family cookout picnic, and this year, kids can earn prizes as a result of good attendance. Every time a kid comes to the program, you'll have a little prize punch card, and we'll stamp his card, and when he's got 10 stamps, he gets a prize, and his prize card goes into a raffle for the household and makes his parents eligible for a drawing for a gift card that they can be used to buy fuel or groceries around town. So I'm taking advantage of the fact that a lot of people watch the commission meetings by TV, so I thought this is a great way to make sure we, the word gets out. We're going to have a really great program this summer, but having a great program is not enough if you don't have the kids. So you'll be seeing the flowering of about 100 lawn signs around town and the, oh, let me also mention that we have a shuttle bus again this summer, and we've added shuttle bus service to the west side of Haverhill Road. So on our flyer, we have the 11 stops that the shuttles will stop at. This information is also online at kidsniteeet, which you can abbreviate with K-N-the-number-two-e.org or .com. I own them all. I also own Kids Need to Eat, too, but, or call me if you, or email me if you want the information, but the, so we have 11 shuttle bus stops to bring the kids to the Family Worship Center, including two on the other side of Haverhill Road. One will be at Oil Hill Elementary School, and another one is at Silverwood Apartments. And this information also is on Channel 7, for those of you who watch, look at the public information on Channel 7. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank USC 490 for providing shuttle bus service and all the support they give us. We raised enough money to buy enough food for 150 kids a day. That's a lot of food when you do it for 30 days, and in particular, we're very appreciative of Cornell and Cornell Attorneys and Mary Cornell for their support of the program, and the White Eagle Credit Union, and so many, many more. So thank you for the opportunity to share the word about this program.
Thank you, Judith, for everything you've done.
Can I make a comment about the Kids Need to Eat?
Certainly.
I volunteered last summer, and it's, even though I'm a retired teacher, it's still kind of a wake-up sign when you see all these kids come through that really need that extra meal and the breakfast in the morning. A lot of times you have grandparents who have kids for the summer, they're babysitting, and grandparents may not be in the best financial need, and so consequently, they bring the kids. The parents, the grandparents, very, very appreciative of what this organization does for these kids. Kind of, it really is eye-opening, but I will make one comment. Kids do not like raisins. They'll take Rice Krispie bars, popsicles, anything but raisins. So hopefully you didn't buy any this year.
A smaller amount.
Good, good.
I like raisins. Bring them to my house.
Yeah, me, too.
Okay, thank you. Another?
Gary Owen, 1655 Trune North here in El Dorado. I'd like to address the greens on the golf course. It seems to me that most decisions regarding the golf course, beginning with the purchase several years ago and now continuing with this plan, are made behind closed doors by a handful of people and only exposed to the light of day when they come before the commission for approval. Rhetorically, I ask, why is that? Would it not have been a better process if staff and the advisory board had allowed, perhaps even encouraged, input in by the, into the plan by those most impacted by it? That is, the people that use the golf course? Would it not have been a better process if, once the plan was developed, it was made available to those impacted by it? It could have been disseminated at the course, it could have been posted on the website, it could have been emailed to everyone that receives email regarding the golf course. There could have even been a public meeting where the plan was presented to the golfers, and they were There could have even been a public meeting where the plan was presented to the golfers, and they were allowed to have their concerns with it addressed. Then it could be presented to you tonight as a plan that had been vetted by and had the support of the golfers. However, none of that was done, and now you find yourselves here being asked to consider a significant chunk of money to put in the budget next year, and most of the people that are gonna be impacted by your decision are not even aware of what's happening. I think there should be more openness in city government in general, and especially in this instance, since it significantly impacts the availability and playability of the golf course. I simply do not understand the purpose of doing this in secret. If you give me just one more minute, I'd like to address one specific issue regarding the plan. Some of you may not be familiar with the term they used a minute ago called temporary greens, so please allow me to describe what that's meant, what that term means. When someone says temporary greens, they mean a place in the fairway in front of a green being built, being rebuilt, that is identified as either mowed very short, or usually just simply with a circle, some type of lime circle or something like that around it, with a cup and a flagstick in the middle of it. A local rule is established that says once your ball's within that boundary of the temporary green, you putt once. If you make that shot, it completes the hole. If you don't, then you pick up, assuming the next putt to be a give me. This requires very little time, very little effort, and very little money, as it can be as simple as just simply painting a circle in the fairway in front of the green. I asked the commission if this is approved to specifically direct staff to utilize temporary greens, keep the front nine open for play as much as possible during the time the actual greens are rebuilt and grown in. I asked the commission to direct staff to specifically have the front nine open for play with temporary greens in the evening and on weekends. I understand there will be times when specific holes or even the entire nine will have to be closed. However, those times will most likely not be evenings or weekends, which is when eighteen holes are most needed. In my opinion, and I've played that golf course since nineteen seventy-two, there's too much play, and I live on the golf course, by the way, so I see a lot of the traffic on it. My opinion, there's too much play on the course to turn it into a nine-hole course for an extended period of time. There's a men's group that plays on Tuesday night that fills up an entire nine holes. There's a women's group that plays Wednesday evening that consumes most of nine holes. There's a couples group that plays on Friday evening and sometimes Sunday afternoon or evening that would consume the better part of nine holes. It's not practical to have outside play along with those groups on a nine-hole course. The reason I ask you to do that is because what little bit of this plan was made public was made public in January, and at that time, staff was emphatic that they were gonna close that front nine completely for the duration of this project. And I have concerns that without direction from the commission, we will find that front nine closed for days, perhaps weeks at a time. In closing, I'd like to commend previous commissions for the foresight of providing golf for the citizens of El Dorado, and I encourage this permission, this commission, to protect the availability of golf on the course for those same citizens. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you for that, for addressing the commission. Any other, anyone else care to approach the commission in public comment? Seeing none, we'll close that part of our agenda. Thank you again. Item number two is our consent agenda, which includes minutes from our past couple of meetings, meetings from the twenty-ninth and the eleventh, and, um, any comments, questions? Herb, I see on your, on our consent agenda is a C M B license for Willys at, to be at the stadium coming up. The last time we had this request, it was for, um, the Legion, and we, and we acted on it separately. Is there a reason why it's in the consent agenda this way, or?
The, um, the option for the Legion was a resolution because they were serving alcoholic liquor. So, that requires a resolution. A cereal malt beverage is a lesser alcoholic content, and is something that you do here. The liquor license is issued by the state of Kansas, so it can be...
And isn't, I mean, and this is just them approving, but the money and the license and everything is really the state of Kansas. Is that this one we keep?
This is when, we do this license. The state of Kansas gets the money, but we get the license.
Because of a cereal malt beverage, le, lesser alcohol content, is that correct? Okay, thank you. Everybody's had, um, minutes and a, and a chance to look through, uh, these items. I would entertain a motion.
I move that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the petition on project number four seven seven, paving of Gouda Street.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, Brian Patton, owner of property along Sixth Avenue, has requested that the city of El Dorado pave a three-hundred-foot section of Gouda Street to serve improvements he is making on his property. The project will impact three parcels of land. The majority landowner in size is Mr. Patton, who signed the petition. And there is two other properties involved in this project as well, um, which did not sign the petition. So per statute, we do have a successful petition based on the, the area of land within the improvement district. I, I feel like I might walk up to the map there and show you guys where Gouda Street is. Gouda, Gouda Street was paved in the late eighteen hundreds. Right now, it functions as, um, as a...
Eighteen hundreds?
Late eighteen hundreds, yeah.
Oh, late eighteen hundreds.
Yeah. It is right where my cursor is. I hope you guys can see that, where I'm moving up and down. It is directly west of Waco and east of El Rico Court. Mr. Patton is, um, currently under construction on a new, um, building on his property, and has requested the road be paved to serve that improvement. And maybe a little more information for this being the first time for a few of you. The city can receive a petition to initiate a project. And the things we are looking for, the majority of landowners, the majority of land within that improvement district, or the majority of resident owners. We met one of those criteria, that being the majority owner of land area, area-wise within that improvement district. The estimated cost for the project are a hundred and five thousand dollars, eight hundred and nine, a hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars. Of that, the city of large would be responsible for ten thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars, with the remaining being split between the three parcels of land.
And that remaining split, thank you, Scott, for that, just some clarifications on my part. That remaining split is based on frontage?
It is not. It's based on square footage.
Square footage of lot?
Square footage of...
Square footage of property within the improvement district boundary. To the east, the improvement district boundary abuts, um, what is Waco Street? And to the west, that boundary is the, um, property line of, let me go to the map again, I apologize. We need to get a brighter cursor here, where my cursor's going up right down.
Yes, yes.
That, that is the, that is the, um, west boundary of the improvement district on the west side, and Waco is the east boundary for the east parcels.
Basically, one lot deep.
Yeah, and you can see, here is one parcel here, and another there, and then this entire west is one parcel.
And Scott, the, uh, the normal is like in between two blocks, it's halfway. That isn't the case with Waco?
That is not, not the case on this one.
Say that again. What was your comment?
Every property owner in El Dorado is obliged to pay for the improvement on two streets. Normally, and we don't see normal very often, but normally, in, um, a, a neighborhood actually like yours or mine, where there's two streets, you, you, the pro, the benefit district would go halfway between your street and the next street, and so, the alley or my backyard. And then the house to the west of me, as an example, would have their back, to their backyard. And so with this, I'm just looking at it and thinking, you got Waco there.
Right, and, and it's, and in this circumstance, it's a little different, with only three parcels. It's gonna be split three ways, kinda, regardless of where we put those boundaries. And, um, with the way the El Rico project, um, was assessed against the property owners when that was paved, and looking back at those records, this is where we determine the improvement district line should be, a, as I did as staff.
Kind of, the looks of that property, it doesn't matter really how you do that, is there, whether you go all the way to Waco, or you go half like you're talking about for a benefit district, it's the same owners and same, same percentage at the end of the day.
And, and the, the west pays for the cost of the west half, the east pays for the cost of the east half. So there's a cost per square foot established for the west side, and cost per square foot established for the east side.
And our square footage is determined by intersections? I mean, how did you determine what our section is?
Our, our ten thousand dollars i- is building the intersection, the new intersection off Sixth Avenue.
Okay.
And I believe you all may have someone here that wishes to speak, speak on the project?
My name's Kent Peterson, thirteen seventy-seven Southeast Ellis. I represent the Doris Higgins Trust. And basically, it's the other two properties in there that would be taxed on Waco Street for this. So I'm gonna pay half of his driveway, is what it looks to me. Yeah, it's just gonna be too much of a tax burden. Right now, the, the two, two places pay close to forty-five hundred dollars a year. The bar's been closed for two to three years. The, the house has no access to Gouda Street. It's a backyard. There's a fence, trees. Not, not as required either. I talked to the property owner to the north that owns the trailer court. He said he wasn't interested in paving the street on, later on. You know, I, I don't know what else to do. It's gonna cost me as much as it does Brian Patton. I just wanted to express my opinion on it.
Sure, you have both, both of those properties?
Yes. And in the years past, when I've had plotting done or surveys done, they always showed Gouda Street as vacated. Now, whether it's, they can't find a record that says it's vacated, I, I can't help that, but, you know, I've got documents, it's, or survey plots that say it has been vacated. And I don't know whether that plays a factor in that or not, but...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My, my grandkids do like raisins.
Scott, when, when you're figuring the percentage of a benefit district, do you al, do they always use total square footage, or is that the norm, or?
That is our norm. Now, there are different ways you as a commission can go about that. You can make it equal per parcel, you can, um, go based on linear footage of frontage. You can go based on the value of the property. I believe that's correct. The statute allows for a number of different ways, but our policy and our practices have always been by the square footage. I'm not of aware of another street project that we've done in a different manner, you know, trying to calculate the areas. We've always used square footage. Now sewer, we've done different in a few occasions, um, but as far as I can recall, it's, it's area by square footage.
Cause I was under the impression we use linear footage, so...
Okay. Talk to me a little bit more about the percent of ownership, uh, that we were, a successful petition is percent of landowners or percent of land ownership next to, as I understood it, so, um, looks to me like we've got a fifty-fifty. Uh, so does, does a fif, does a fifty percent ownership tip the scale? At what point does, at what point does Mr. Patterson's efforts force his neighbor to, to do something? I mean, that...
Mi, Mr. Patton...
Or Pat, Patton, excuse me.
Yeah. He has the majority of the, the land in the improvement district, so that's where it meets the criteria. The majority of the area of land.
Fifty-one percent.
Yeah, he, he is at seventy-three thousand, nine hundred square feet roughly, and to the east, the Higgins Trust is at fifty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty square feet. Mr., and this is...
Certainly.
So, if you both have the same linear footage on the road, that's all one thing I just wanted to make clear. He's wider than what property on Waco is.
Right, right, and that, yeah, thank you. That's kinda where I was headed. If you've got the same frontage, and we're talking about a square footage, um, all based on the fact that Mr. Patton's property is, is deeper, uh, gives him some square footage, uh, advantage to the, to the process.
And the road right now is gravel?
Yeah, it's a, it's a Millings Road. This is, this is, Mr. Patton had requested this, um, based on, he's got a new building going up for, um, for a business. He anticipates leasing it very soon. He has interest in further development onto the north in the future as well, on the rest of the part, property he has up there. He's shared with us. So he, he is making an investment on his property, and, um, part of that investment, as, as he sees it, is he, he wants a city street to serve his new business.
So what, I don't remember what the square, so do you have the percentages? What would the percentages be?
I, I didn't break them down by percentage, but, um, seventy-three thousand versus fifty-two thousand square feet.
Okay. So twenty thousand square feet more.
So how much would the Higgins Trust have to pay?
On property number two, which is the former bar, twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighteen estimated right now. The home, which is a parcel to the north of the bar, is estimated at twenty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars.
And that's assessed over twenty years?
That, that would be over twenty years, or at your discretion. Um, here lately, it's been twenty years. And, and then these estimates are, are what we have always told the carriers of petition, petitions or the property owners, that's the highest you should expect to pay. They're very conservative estimates. So we would expect to get better prices than that when we go out to bid. If we don't, we would have to come back and of course, talk to you all.
Okay. Well, a, a conundrum here, in my opinion. Certainly a, a street and Mr. Patton's developments we want, and he's done quite a bit there. But it seems to me that we've got a fifty-fifty. I get that the square footage is sort of seventy-three fifty-two, but in terms of the, the benefit of this whole deal, it would seem to me neighborly of Mr. Patton to have some more discussions about this. I it's hard to, especially a house who's the ba- it's, it's to the back of it. I guess I'm having a hard time a little bit with this. But I'll let the commission have their discussion. We should finish this presentation and we can move to discussion. So, any more? They have? Presentation wise?
I just stand for questions that they have.
You said they had the same frontage?
Yeah, I mean, the, we're going three hundred foot north of the rideaway line of Sixth Avenue. Both roughly around three hundred feet.
So if it was a linear foot method, it'd be fifty-fifty?
Fifty-fifty, yeah.
Ri- right, and and I, I've just never drafted petition that way, cause we've never done it that way. I'm not saying that we couldn't.
I'm just, I'm just asking for, for my, for me.
I think, I think, um yeah, there's been other projects in town, and, and I think Mr. Patton himself, when El Rico court was put in, kinda got the same scenario on him, yeah.
Okay.
Definitely understand the, the cost of the project and the significance of it.
It is finished.
Well, it, it's only paved about three hundred footer, so it's.
There's no court.
There's no court.
There's no board.
Yeah.
I guess I'm kinda thinking, I mean, I, I would be interested to see what some further discussion with Brian could be. I guess I don't know, to, to me, I'm not sure if it all makes sense and like it's fair.
Right.
That's kinda what I'm, I mean, my, my thoughts and what I'm hearing, and maybe I'm not digesting it correctly, but.
I, yeah, I, and, and it's the way we've always presented projects to you.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I, yeah.
Practice we always follow.
You said the bar and the house are vacant? The bar is condemned and the house is?
Bar's been closed for a couple, three years. They're trying to get it opened again, but I don't know if that's gonna happen. The house, that's got my daughter.
And Scott, so the house couldn't, wouldn't, doesn't need the driveway?
No.
Yeah, from talking to Mr. Peterson, it does not need a driveway.
Where does it front?
It fronts Waco.
Okay, so will the commission?
What are y'all thinking down there?
Well. I don't like changing, I mean, that's the way we've always done it, and I actually learned something, cause I really thought we did a linear foot, but I mean, all, if, if Scott says that in the way we do it, I sure believe him. I don't know if I wanna change the way we do it. That's worked for us for years and years and years. I don't ever remember, I don't ever remember us having one like this where, I mean, we've had, we've had quite a few, over the six years I've been here. We've had quite a few that, of these petitions and they usually aren't that close. I mean, as far as, they don't just get their toenails over the line. Uh, this one's tough. I don't, I sure don't wanna cause a hardship on, on someone who doesn't need it. But on the same, the same page, I mean, this, this is the way, I don't know if I'm ready to set a new precedent. I mean, if I don't know how the rest of you feel about, but if, if this is the way we've done it, are you willing to change the way we do it?
Well, just to kinda recollect a little bit, if, if we can. Wasn't but a few meetings ago that we talked about a, an alley downtown where an adjacent property owner refused, it was a fifty-fifty deal. Adjacent property owner refused to sign, and evidently, it must have been a straight fifty-fifty square footage for the, for this, this was for paving an alley, which is different than a street, I get that. But the, the owner that wanted it felt compelled enough to, to pay it all. And, and I guess in this case, is there also, I mean, that said, and I think that option is certainly available. And the other one is, uh, this certainly abuts the, the bar and, and the house, which potentially is, is a, certainly an increase in property value to those adjacent properties with a paved street. And it's part of the, part of the goal of having paved streets, right, is that you, you've got better access and better value to the, to the property. If there was not a, a driveway to either, either one of these pieces of property, does that change the, the equation? If they were, wish to put a drive into the bar area to access the street, then they have their share of the assessment at that time. I'm just kinda thinking out loud as much as anything here, but and I know the, the alley issue was different, or was it? I guess, I, I'll ask the question, was it different?
I think a, a similar scenario was discussed on this project and with the Sider petition. But had the discussion that the adjacent landowner is getting a benefit from this.
So, so there is no, okay, and on this picture, you have those two, north off Sixth Street, between Waco and it's Gouda Street? Okay, you've got that first white line, is that the property line for the hideout or the old bar?
Yes.
Okay, then that next property, then that next white line is the, is the property line for the, um, house?
Correct.
And there's, and the house has a driveway off Waco?
Correct.
And there's no access off Gouda, correct, to the house?
Yeah, they don't utilize it. There's no access off Gouda.
So you're only gonna go as far as the first two lots with that street?
Yes.
Can the Higgins Trust afford two thousand three hundred and eighty dollars a year for the next twenty years?
I can't say for the next twenty years, maybe, but not for twenty years. You know, if the bar would get back open possibly, but.
Scott, tell me, okay, tell me if this is just insane. There's no access to this, to this north lot where the house sits. Have we ever done anything where a lot didn't have access? And if at any time in the future, they requested access, at that time, they'd be liable for the improvement to the street. Have we ever done anything like that?
Yeah, we have. We could, we could divert the assessment until access was requested.
Then who would that fall on? Us?
It would be bookkeeping with us. I mean, keeping records, probably filing something on the deed of the property.
And the city would be taking the cost of the other half of the street, or the fifty-two, that, that percentage. Is that right?
Is that the twenty thousand or the twenty-six eight? Is that the twenty thousand seven hundred lot or the twenty-six eight lot?
Twenty-six, oh, good question.
The twenty thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollar lot.
So you could vacate both of them and not allow the bar access to that road either, until they open it back up and want access there, you would have to pay for it?
I think if we're doing this, yeah, if we're doing the street, we'd like to get access to the bar. Just that being a commercial property, and the future of it being a, some, some non-residential use. We, we could not put access in for the house and then create some type of fee when access is requested. But it would be like a lump sum.
That's a slippery slope in and of itself, in terms of future streets.
Well, and I think that the reality is, won't surprise me if people don't jump the curb. I mean, and then.
Well, it's just, it just begs the question to me as a precedent of.
Well, you've done it. I mean, you've done it.
We've done it though.
Did it on Thirtieth Street, Wildcat Way, done it.
I think that's the only one. We, we've discussed the possibility with some city-county type scenarios.
All right, all right.
Could you live with that?
Well, can you say that one more time? I wasn't sure what you meant.
Explain to her what you want, Nick. Pardon me, the one who was talking about it?
Well, I'm just saying, if, if we, if we cut out the lot where the house is, and didn't assess anything to the lot with the house until such time that whether it be you, or if you sold that lot, or if someone in the future wanted access there, and at that time, then there would be a fee based on, you know, if they say, well, we want access to that, okay, well, it's gonna cost you X amount of dollars.
Okay, but that has to be paid in a lump sum, you said.
We, we could, I mean, we're carrying finance costs for who knows how long, and I guess we could just eat, not keep track of that, or I, or you might help me here.
And, and, wh- what, this is different than the statute. The statute anticipates specials. If what Nick's suggesting or asking about, would, if the commission had do it, is the commission is essentially meeting that specials commitment. You're financing it, you're paying for it. And so, again, so now you're not, we're not doing this under the color of state law, we're doing it under your authority as a commission. You can do it however you want. I mean, you, you've paid it. If you want them to pay lump sum, you can. If you want them to ask and then you finance it to them, you can. It's, it's just how you wanna ha- manage your money, but it.
I could live with that on the house, but now was, we're still gonna have access to, for the bar if they ever get that open?
And that's, I think that's why I'm hearing him say.
Yeah, cause the house is residential, the bar's commercial.
Right, and it, it does have access now to Gouda Street.
Right. I don't know, I mean, I'm just trying to I thought, I thought we'd done that in the past once, or I thought I remembered us doing that, but I know it's, it's not common. But.
I think I could live with that, if, but we'd have to, I don't want, you said something about a mortgage on the title, I don't want that.
No, I, we just have to file some of the deed.
Well, not mortgage, but a lien or something, the way I took it.
Well, it, it would, you'd have to file some sort of notice on, on the property, so if you ever sold it, the potential owner would have the understanding that they wanted access.
Wouldn't, wouldn't be a lien.
Wouldn't be a lien, it'd just be something on the abstract saying if, if you ever wanted access to Gouda off, off that lot, it's gonna, there's a fee involved.
I just wanted to clarify that in my head.
No, there wouldn't be any.
It's not a lien.
Yeah, well, I, I said the wrong word, yeah.
And I guess I'd note here, pretty special circumstance due to the benefit district being so limited in this, and as it proceeds, as it proceeds further north, we've got this same issue. I mean, it's gonna go another quarter mile as this property develops, and I guess as we sit here as a commission, none of the trailer houses that are further north, I mean, we'd be in the same, we'd be making the same decision. We've set the precedent for these guys, and the city ready to stand for for quite a bit more road. I guess I just wanna point that out as we set this precedent, if that's the direction we go.
I don't know if I like that direction. For what it's worth.
If we were done with it, and that we weren't paving, we weren't looking to pave any more street, it'd be a different discussion, but really we got a quarter mile street to work with in the future.
I'd rather keep it a milled road right now, until they can come in agreement with each other, and then move on it instead of splitting it up.
Okay. Any more questions from the commission? I need a motion.
I have that. What are our options?
Motion.
Yes, no, or? Can we table it?
Y- yeah, you could definitely table it. You can say, I do not accept the petition. You could ask for the petition to be modified. Really, in, in the other thing, the others, the way to assess, I mentioned a few earlier, and I forgot one, it's one of the other assessment tools is any way the commission's any way the commission desires, or sees fit, that is fair.
And the, and the key is that is fair, and so.
Or equitable, I think it uses that word.
So you've just gotta be able to defend it. But the three hundred, I mean, if you do frontage. But the three hundred, I mean, if you do frontage, it's identical and it's.
Yeah, no, that's not.
It's fifty-fifty.
So if we tabled it till the next meeting, what is that? Okay. What does that do as far as the petition goes? Does it just put it off two weeks?
Just puts it off. You can, you can tell me to draft it in a different manner, and I can't present it to both property owners. Do nothing or accept, so.
Well, I guess what I'm thinking with, with Nick's suggestion, I would like to drive out there and look at what we're talking about.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not.
I would like to see, you know, what we're talking about at Gouda Street, get an idea of where this building is being built. Get a, you know, up close and personal look at it as opposed to on the screen.
And I'm okay with that. I, I guess I'm thinking, I'm not against this, but I'm not for, I mean, but I don't necessarily wanna see it go away. If we could have some more dialogue with, with both property owners, I guess I just don't feel like it's completely fair in what I'm hearing.
If that's fair to have, to table it and ask Scott to, to meet with the, are there, there's just two property owners, yourself and Brian Patton? To meet with the property owners and see if could come to a a different way of divvying it up, or that both, it would be acceptable to both property owners? Is that, is that fair to ask?
Can you, do you know who owns the trailer park? The trust owns the trailer park.
Noel, he does not, but he knows the general.
Robert Corner does. He bought it from, from the trust. I've talked with him.
And what's he, does he have any long, I mean, do you think he's gonna maintain that trailer park forever, or no?
I don't, I asked him today, or yesterday specifically, on the telephone, if, if he was interested in paving that, and he said, no, he was not.
Is, and I guess my question, and you may not be able to answer, is, is he interested in maintaining it the way it is forever? I mean, not forever, but for the foreseeable future.
I think so.
And does he have access, does the trailer park have access off Gouda?
Yeah, the trailer park fronts right on it.
It also has access off Waco.
They have access off Waco?
It's a circle drive.
Oh.
I was wrong. Boy, they're tight. I mean, we're gonna have a non-conforming use when this is all said and done. Is Gouda, what's the right of way?
How'd you get that good picture?
Technology.
Never mind.
Google Earth. Um, so we, we've got, I mean, we've got a can of worms here, a little bit with Gouda going further north, do we not?
Well, that's why, that's why I asked about the trailer park, to.
Yeah.
If, if the commission wants to learn more and look at it, then you might as well address Chase's question about the trailer park.
Yeah, I would, I would feel more comfortable if we go ahead and table it, get a decision made at the next meeting, but we, I, I would prefer to understand a little bit more now that we talk about it, even drive out there myself. 'Cause I guess just as is, I don't feel comfortable with it. I would say you, you brought up the width of the road. Gouda Street is platted at forty foot width, which is very narrow. There has, there will definitely be have the dedication of right of way on the west, which has already occurred on Mr. Patton's property.
Okay.
To get adequate right of way to build the city street in there and push water lines. We're gonna have to get a water line to serve his business up there as well.
So we've already increased the right of way associated with this proposed road, proposed street? Okay. Wow, we got. Okay. I'm hearing that this will likely be tabled for us to talk about again after spending some more time contemplating and looking at the situation in purpose, or in purpose, in person?
And if we have any questions, we can call you, Scott.
That would be great. Do we need a motion to table Tabitha? Mr. Mayor, I move we table project number four seven seven.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in favor. Any further, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Our next agenda item is issue of geo-bonds. Is that right?
We have our financial advisor, Tom Calico, here this evening, and do you wanna start off?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. Tom Calico with Springstead Incorporated. We're the city's financial advisor, although thanks to the Dodd-Frank Act, we're now known as municipal advisors, so if you see that term, that's, that's what, used to be financial advisor, now we're municipal advisors. You should have received in your packet a sale, set of sale recommendations. Did you all receive that? Yep, okay, great. It, it's intended really to be a summary document for you, kinda summarizing the transaction. I am happy to go through it, or I can respond to your questions. Mayor, which would you prefer?
Would you go, since some of us are new, and some of these projects are previous commission, would you mind going through it?
Sure, okay. So what, the action you have before you this evening is the approval of a resolution which really just begins the process. It, it authorizes staff, bond counsel, your municipal advisor to begin the process of selling these general obligation bonds. We'll be back to you on July twentieth for the actual sale, and at that time, they should actually finally approve the sale. The, the bonds themselves, and we talked a little bit about them, we're estimating them at four point two million dollars, four million two hundred and seven thousand. They are intended to do basically two things. One is to fund eleven internal improvement projects of the city. Most of these are special assessment projects, like the one you were just talking about. And then there's also a refunding of the city's Series two thousand eight bonds, and that refunding is strictly for the purpose of interest cost savings. The term of the debt will remain the same. It's just basically to take the advantage of current interest rate environment and to get a lower interest rate on those, to save some money. We're estimating the savings at, I think it's around a hundred thousand right now, the interest cost savings, yeah, a little over a hundred thousand, and that's net of any, any fees associated with the transaction. The bonds would run a, a term of, of ten years. And it would be general obligation bond, so they're backed by the city's full faith and credit taxing authority. Any questions on any of that?
And you said the total amount was?
We're estimating it at four million two hundred and seven thousand. Now, understand that is likely to change somewhat on the day of sale, depending on what kind of bids you get. Sometimes we receive what are called premium bids, which is essentially some prepaid interest. It's a marketing technique that bond investors use. If we do get that, then we're likely to reduce the size of the bond issue, so there is some variability in size, but it's gonna be about that amount. The refunding itself makes up a little, little less than half of the total bond amount, so it's about, a little over half is new, new money, as we call it, and then a little under half is the refunding. One thing I might also cover for those who are new, there are different ways of selling municipal bonds. What we're proposing here is a competitive sale, so on July twentieth, the day of the sale, we will actually take competitive bids from investment banks, and the investment bank proposing the lowest interest cost will win, and will award the, the bond sale to them. That's called the competitive sale method. You may have heard sometimes it's only called a negotiated sale method, where you basically pick a bank, and then you negotiate the sale with them. We, we're big proponents, Springstead as a municipal advisor, we're big proponents of competitive sales. We think competition works and tends to get you the best interest rate and terms, so whenever possible, we do try to bring the, the city's debt obligations to a competitive sale.
But this resolution's only for four million one hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and forty-two fifty-seven.
That actually does not.
Does that have ten projects, and I think you said eleven?
Yeah.
No, there's two. The four-ten and four-eleven.
Yeah, that, that, there's not really a correspondence between those. Those are the maximum project costs.
Right.
You're not actually even spending that amount. Those are just listed as the maximum project costs that I believe were previously authorized by the commission. That doesn't actually correspond to the amount of the bonds themselves, because obviously, the refunding isn't even included in that, in that four million one hundred and forty thousand.
Okay.
So the bond sale, we're being told, is the four point two million for the four point one million dollars worth of projects, which probably includes fees and stuff like that associated with selling the bonds, is that correct?
Right, yeah, if you, if you want, you can look on page six of the sale recommendation, oh, hang on, sorry, no, I'm sorry, page, correction, page five, and that actually has the sources and uses, and you can see where the money's coming from and where it's going.
Talk to me about, I mean, we, we, some of these are projects that are, and you kind of alluded to. These are based off of the estimates, and we don't, they're the high side of what we expect a project to cost.
These represent what we.
What we approved.
What we, well, no, actually, what they represent is what, in most cases, you've actually spent, I believe I'm correct, and these projects are primarily complete.
Okay.
So they're, so they're what, you actually spent less any other revenues that you might have received, say, earlier, maybe prior special assessment revenue, grant revenue, any other revenue that you've received. So this is the net cost that the city is financing.
All right, so we're not bonding any speculation. What we've really got here is, these were temp noted until they were all sold and bundled into something that we could sell as a bond, right?
Correct, that's exactly right.
Which is the only way we've done debt here. We've always either financed it internally or done temp notes and then bonded the exact amount.
Okay.
Bonded what we wanted to bond.
And I know it's a little confusing in the resolution, Commissioner Lewis referred to it, I think, I think bond counsel, as a matter of practice, just lists because these projects were previously authorized, and they just pull from those previous project authorizations the maximum project amount that was authorized, and they put it in this resolution, but I can see where that creates a little bit of confusion.
But to be clear, and I don't know that I find it here on, on these, we are being asked to approve four point two million in terms of bond sale. Is that right?
No, the, the resolution does not list a specific amount. It basically just authorizes you to sell debt for the two purposes that I've, that I've indicated.
The four point four, that, I mean, the four point one four oh is, as Tom said, it's a list of projects, and on this, so if you flip to the second page, it says, "Resolution authorizing the offering of sale of GEO refunding and improvement bonds, Series two fifteen A of the City of El Dorado." And so that's what you're resolving, not two point, not four point two.
All right, thank you for that.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna bond just the amount needed to finance the projects and conduct the refunding.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Do we have a resolution number? Mr. Mayor, I move the resolution, resolution number two eight zero four, "Resolution authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation refunding and improvement bonds, Series two zero one five A of the City of El Dorado, Kansas."
Second. Okay, it's been moved to second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Tammy Tabitha, before Mr. Clicker goes away, did you get your question answered on these forms that need to be signed?
Yes, I pulled the other pages. He said those don't need to be signed. They're, they were just for your knowledge.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next thing on our agenda is land bank discussion. We have someone. We think we have staff as well as Inc. here to talk about the, the idea of land banks, and let's talk a little bit about why, I mean, land bank is, we had some discussion on that in our visioning sessions, and it was spirited discussion, and we also, I think we've got some, of some pending or upcoming opportunities that bring this to the front, if I understand right, so.
Yeah, and if I may start off, for the last few months, the city staff has been working on a, a policy on how to sell city-owned property for redevelopment. And, and we are getting to the point where we're about ready to present that to you guys for discussion and consideration. And in the meantime, Linda and I, and, and other various people throughout the community, and have discussed the concept of land banking. But really, kinda, some recent developments have made it kinda come up to the front of why we need to probably consider this, instead of, in my recommendation, just a policy on the sale of city-owned property. One of those being, we're notified by the county that a lot of this city-owned property that we've recently acquired, they're not recommending tax exemption on those properties until we get rid of them. So then we are sitting there with the burden of paying taxes on a piece of property. That is one tool that a land bank gives us, is that it immediately, when a, a piece of property comes within a land bank, it is exempt from all out-of-lorm tax, property tax, except for special assessments. And the, the other thing is, is over the last few years, since the commission initiated a building demolition fund, we initially acquired properties within the flood plain, or properties that just could not be built on, that, that needed to go, and, and we focused on that. And here in the last few years, we've been able to focus on some really dilapidated structures, structures that were, that needed to go, and we were able to acquire those either with negotiation with a landowner, or acquiring them through sheriff sale. So we're just here to, just briefly talk about the idea of a, a land bank and the positives that we think it could create for the community. Linda, you can jump in whenever. In, in, maybe a little history on a land bank. The land bank was first established in two thousand ten, nine, somewhere in that area, Windite County, dealing with a lot of blight in the, in the Kansas City area. Needed a way to address, address vacant parcels of land, dilapidated structures, pieces of li, land that the city owned, and, and then had to maintain. So they were able to get a set of statutes passed in the legislature that allowed the creation of a land bank for communities to use. There are three or four within Kansas now. So the one, and the ones I'm aware of are Pittsburgh. So the ones, and the ones I'm aware of are Pittsburgh, Hutchinson, Wind dot.
Wind County.
So that's Emporia? The map, the map I have up there, everything within that yellow highlighted is property that the City of El Dorado owns currently. A lot of that you'll see on there is either city parks, library, ball fields. But, but as you can see, there's a few parcels that the city is getting that, that are buildable lots, that are core parts of our community that we would love to see someone interested in redeveloping that lot and creating some infill in an established neighborhood that would hopefully increase property values, get neighbors to consider improvements as well.
I think a couple of things that I wanted to bring up, just coming even out of our community summit, when the group met, some of the action steps they talked about were to determine the need, our need of a land bank in the community. Because it is something foreign to most people, they were concerned that we create rules and goals, which is part of the process when you do create a land bank. And then to be able to educate people, what does this really mean? And I think that El Dorado Inc. did some significant work. In April of two thousand and fourteen, we engaged an attorney that had some background in land banking or trusts also, who did some additional research and gave us an opinion letter with some of the, an outline of some of the things that he had discovered about the land bank process specifically. And one of the things that comes to mind is it says that, you know, there's different ways to acquire property for the land bank. And it's not, it's not designated to take people's property away from them. It's talking about underutilized property, property that's vacant, property that's been abandoned, potentially maybe the property that someone wanted to donate. So you look at this, and it says, you know, "Some of your goals might be to acquire non-productive land, to accept a conveyance in lieu of foreclosure on a delinquent piece of property, to serve as an agent for grant applications and administration of grants. Might also look at acquiring groups of properties." And the statute talks about being able to acquire groups of property for future developments where the use of the property, or there would be a higher or better use of the property if you had two or three par, parcels together that could be redeveloped. And I know that one of the questions that even came up in the summit was, we looked at the inventory. You have to publish your inventory of property at all times. And some of them would say "not available." When I was reading through all the specifics of the Johnson County program, not available property is property they've designated in a redevelopment district. They're gonna hold that aside until they accumulate a large enough piece of property to redevelop it and create a higher and better use. But it's not about going out and just taking people's property away from them. And I wanted to bring that up because that's something that is kind of discussed, and that is not an intent purpose or even an availability under the land bank and the criteria that you set. So. And we have a, a wealth of information that we can provide for your review if you would like.
And maybe structurally, what, this is different than what we've talked about the commission before, before the commission was gonna set that policy. If you created a land bank, then the commission would create a board, seven people?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
There's not necessarily a number, and it, the commission itself can be that board or they can appoint.
And so you make, you make, you create a board, like Scott said, you could have yourself bid, or you can appoint other people and, and then have them do the, set policy or structure in any way you'd like. But it is, it is different than what we've talked about in the past. But with the, the liability that came with the Greylers addition and it's, and the, and the inability to take it off the taxes, we're gonna have a liability. We're gonna pay property taxes to four ninety, Butler County, BCC.
Us.
Us.
Us and three seventy-five plus.
Oh, no, not four ninety on Greiler.
Three seventy-five.
Three seventy-five. Yeah, yeah. And specials, to ourselves. And so...
And in this land bank, or, or this trustees, or can definitely come up with their own policy or application procedures. We have, we have, as staff, have drafted applications for, the purchase applications for the donation, policy guidelines, like, say someone was interested in a piece of property that's city-owned, they would need to come into our office and submit a site plan, commit to construction within a year, have no delinquent taxes, have no prior code offenses. So there's, there's language, just us as staff have talked about, and, and looking at other communities, how they drafted their policies and procedures. So we kind of feel like we have a lot of this put together. And, and in talking to Herb, it's, you know, gosh, we're almost right there to go ahead and just make this a land bank instead of just a policy. There's not too much difference there, kind of dependent on the commission and how they wanna set a board up, or if they wanna act as that board. There's a lot of similarities there. And I, and I think we do have interest in some of this property that we've acquired, be it Greiler addition or some vacant lots within the core of the community, that are, we would really love to see new homes go in on, and...
That are ready for new homes. And, I mean, we have probably fifteen lots that are buildable.
In Greiler. And, and I can think of three within the core of the community that could are, could be rebuilt now.
Yeah, we have several, and more coming.
Yeah, and it could be a tool for us to hold city parkland in and look to acquire more potential parkland, use the land bank as a tool for that industrial ground. You know, there's a lot of industrial zone property that the city owns that could be sent.
Sounds, go ahead.
No, I did, and I missed the first part, and I apologize. So are you, did you say that any land that we put into this land bank, that the taxes cease then?
They're until, until it's resolved.
Do they?
Until it, until it comes with a taxable purpose.
Do they continue to accrue?
No.
And, and, and really hoping to work with Butler County as well, and talking to some of these other communities with their land bank, say in Pittsburgh, I was talking to the housing director at Pittsburgh, if a property is up for sheriff's sale within Pittsburgh, the county automatically grants it to the land bank if the grant, if the land bank is willing to accept it. Unlike, right now, the city has to go up and competitively bid against...
Whoever.
Whoever.
And, and as a general rule, we don't, when we go to a sale, we're not particularly interested in bidding against a private individual who's gonna build on it, 'cause...
That's what we want.
That's what we want. And I think the, the downside is, Greiler's a great example. It was bought for two hundred dollars. Two hundred dollars, two years ago at tax sale. And so we could've bought it for two hundred and one, or two hundred. But the, the person who bid on it and got the bid decided to say, "Never mind." And so they never paid the two hundred, never got the property. And so we bought it a year later.
Fifty bucks a lot.
For a lot more.
Fifty dollars a lot, not an acre, a lot.
The, and, and I just want to be clear, so far, when we've, when we've bid at those sheriff's sales, we're looking at, if there's an existing home, it's a home that needs to go away. It's a, it's a, it's got major issues. It's a problem. And really would like to, to get the county involved with that, where if it's a property that has so many code issues and is frankly dangerous, it, it needs to be dealt with prior to going to sheriff's sale in some manner.
Well, it sounds like it could potentially be a positive tool. I'd be curious to some, kind of see some of the structural stuff you guys have put together, just so we can get as educated as we can on our end as we move forward, as people have more questions and kind of clarify. And like you said, that was a big thing, to clarify that we're not taking anyone's property, and we're not out to do that. But so maybe passing along some of that stuff that you guys have as you put it together. I, I would like to see.
Do you have this concept, I mean, do you have it down on paper anywhere?
I, I think we just wanted to openly discuss it tonight, and, and for the community at home as well. And, and I know we didn't get too deep into it, but that, just something we're thinking about, and we think it would be a good move for El Dorado to make.
Okay. I'm familiar with Pittsburgh's plan. There's certainly been some discussion about land banks, and I think it can be a very effective tool. What I, what I am nervous about, I guess, and it's in Pittsburgh's plan, and that is that whole notion about the county just deeding the land, if you will, for the, for the delinquent tax, not for the cost, but the fact that it is delinquent. Instead of going to sheriff's tale for, sheriff's sale for delinquent tax, it's, goes to the land bank. And I, I guess I'd be cautious about that idea, and that you end up with ones, and you end up with lots scattered all around town, which, to me, the real, the real interest to me, or the real incentive would be the, the ability to, to get groupings of contiguous property, rather than hit and miss all over the place. I mean, and, and do we really have, when those come up for sale, on the sheriff's sale, are they, are they not getting participation, or getting people wanting to, to step up and have that, get that property? Because I think at that point, and my, correct me if I'm wrong, the taxes are zero at that point anyway. They've sold it for a tax sale, and they've taken the loss on the county side. Is that right?
Everyone, every taxing entity's taking a loss. And I think the, the, the reality is that dilapidated structures in some of these properties, the, the owner of the property does not have the desire or the means to rehabilitate. And so it's really an expense to the city that you will probably never get your investment back, which you, in, in the short term, and on a dollar-to-dollar, you get it over the long term with an improvement to a neighborhood. And so you have to look at it that way. And so I think the thing in Pittsburgh, and I think absolutely understand your apprehension, the land bank gets to pick the ones it wants. So you wouldn't be getting, well, if you, if you took the twenty-foot lot, you'd do it just to facilitate getting it to somebody else who wants it. And so I think you'd, you'd do, look at them all individually, and, and it would, and you'd look at it as for the long haul. How can, how can we take this property and get a higher, better use than it is today?
So we're not ob, we wouldn't be obligated to take one?
No.
I mean, if they, we'd never be forced to take one.
And I'm thinking, and, and so, I mean, we've had, we've had people propose projects to Linda and I that did exactly what you said, get a bunch of property together and do a redevelopment. And, great. And I think the, and I think one of the problems with that is that as you're trying, as a, as someone who's really trying to get that done, runs down to the end of the list of whose property needs to be acquired, those people come to think it's very, very valuable, in which case then it's a little different. It's different than this. But I think us, right now, we have several lots in the core of the community that would be a great place to build a single-family home. You couldn't do a whole development, but you can sure infill a new house in an older neighborhood, and your infrastructure's paid for. You don't have specials. And the ones I'm thinking of, you even have trees.
Well, and, and I hope you see too, with showing a reinvestment into a core part of the community, it invigorates other homeowners in the area, or even landlords, to make investments in their property. I think kind of seeing that nationwide and researching these land banks, that it kind of creates a sense of pride. Well, if they're gonna invest in my neighborhood, you know, I'm gonna paint my house and fix the place up. And, and with the scenario at, at what we're dealing with is, these, these properties that are dilapidated that may go up to sheriff's sale, or we acquired another man, or, or pass from landlord to landlord, that are absentee landlords, that we have many issues with, that are renting these places out to people, and just frankly taking advantage of them. And, and the city's trying to step in and protect some of those people.
Okay.
But we're talking primarily about vacant properties.
Right. No, I, I, and I, and I think that's important to point out. We're not, it's, it's not a land grab, it's a land bank. And I think we wanna be pretty careful about that.
And that, yes, primarily vacant. And we've seen instances where properties went to sheriff's sale, were purchased, are just horrendous. And the demolition necessary to clean them up ends up being more than the people that bought them. They continue to remain a problem for the city. Because you're, they're not getting mowed, they're not being cleaned up.
Right.
They're continuing to deteriorate. They harbor, some of them, a couple that I can think of are in a neighborhood that is reinvesting, and the nicer homes around there are contending with these properties that aren't cleaned up.
We've got a little machine that'll do that.
And, and the other thing you have to keep in mind is, the land bank has to take into consideration that once they take the property, it has to be maintained. And so there's a cost to make ones. And so they're gonna try to make good decisions on the property and know that they have the means to demo and so forth if necessary.
How long's it gonna be before you're ready to present this to, for a final?
I, I mean, I, from my perspective, we wanted just to introduce the concept. And if there was an apprehension on the commission that, that you didn't even wanna know more about it, we wouldn't come any further. And so it's really just to gauge interest in knowing more about it. And because early, in, in, during the winter, we actually had some property we were about ready to sell, and we brought the commission some outlines of standards to try to get this going. And the commission was, said, "Okay, let's do more of this." And so this is a change of direction. That plan would've been something that it would've been done internally and not had, and, and so we would've done it based on these guidelines that you would set. This is a different method. This is a, a potentially another board that's gonna be doing work for y'all. And, and then it's, and then there, so it's a different set of criteria. And I guess as, as we talked about it, again, if you were uncomfortable giving this work away, then in my mind, you would want real estate people or build- then in my mind, you would want uh, real estate people, or builders, or, I mean, you'd want those kind of people, engineers, architects maybe. You'd want those professionals that understand the concept, understand what, what, what you all are wanting done with this ground, and historically, it's always been um, highest best use, and so vacant and, vacant or uh, rundown, worn out house has always been something that the commission has wanted us to work on, to reduce that blight in our community. And I think, I mean, when, when I came, I think INC was recommending to the commission, I mean, the, the code enforcement officer, that was driven by Tom Murray and I think INC, and again, it was about addressing blight in our community, and, and trying to hold everyone to a minimum standard. And so that's been kind of what we've been doing, and so before we went too far in land bank discussion, it was really bring you the concept, cause you, Vince has heard it, in INC at least, I don't know where else, but the commission as a body had never heard about the concept till tonight, and so it was really just introducing a concept and giving you more options if you wanted it, but if you're comfortable with just doing it ourselves, happy to do that. We do have some limitations on, I mean, we're gonna pay taxes on some property.
Sounds like a beneficial program though, it really does.
I'd be interested in hearing more about it, or learning more about it. I don't know if I understand it completely, but.
Yeah, we can definitely feed you more information as, as you see fit, and then if you wanna convene again and talk.
Yeah, I, I think I'd like to see more information, I'd like to see a timeline on when we could anticipate uh, moving forward with it. If we could get more information, and then get a proposed timeline uh, for implementing it, um, all that, assuming we're comfortable with how, how the structure starts to look, but uh, I don't wanna, if we get started, I don't wanna kick the can very much, let's do it if we're gonna do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are to item number six, which is new business. Anybody, uh, this is a chance for our commission to bring up anything new, or open the floor.
I got a strange, I got a strange request, but I, the uh, the council from Augusta, they're, they're facing a water park like ours, up on North Main, and they asked me how much it costs to have that done, to put one of those in, and I'd like for one of you all to contact them and tell them how much it costs, because the cities, the people of Augusta have been coming up to our park, have liked it, and they want one in their community now too.
I think I told them, I mean, the.
I know we've sent it to several cities.
And I got an email on it.
I, I know we've sent it to several cities, we can send it on to them as well, so, no problem.
Okay, yeah, they, they sent me an email and asked me.
Isn't there a system, a little, a, a young lady? Oh, okay, we'll get it to them.
Okay, that was one thing they had, and also on their permits, on the uh, on the roofers, are they all being background checked? Scott, before they're issued a permit, and see if they're state certified?
Yeah, it, to be able to pull a permit to re-roof a roof, the city of El Dorado, um, you have to be licensed with the state of Kansas.
Okay, that's all I have.
And then we do, we send it to Z, do you know what they do?
That's for door to door.
Oh, that's door to door sales.
Door to door sales.
Does that take a, a city permit to go door to door?
Through Tabitha's office, and.
Are they required to show you that permit before they give their pitch, or do you have to ask to see it?
You need to ask to see it, they're not required to show it to you, they are required to carry it on their person, and every person that is going door to door should have their name on that permit, and that name should match their driver's license, and if it doesn't.
I was asked, because I was asked that today.
Yeah, you can feel free to call the police department if they can't prove, provide that for you, and they will be happy to come out and talk to them.
Explain it to them?
Okay.
That's all I have.
I just wanted to say, I uh, I was in the new, uh, or not the new, but the newly remodeled Bradford Library, and congratulations to everybody that was involved in that, that is really nice, it is, it's very refreshing, it's, it's new and modern, and it's great, and I love it, and thank you to everybody that helped with that and contributed to that, and, good job.
And was it full?
Full of books, or full of people? Uh, the computer places were, I walked right past those, but, but uh, I mean, it's just, they've got, you know, places like, I always go back to the, to the new release bestseller deal, and they've got some neat little place you can sit down and kind of browse through them, and, and it's, it's nice, it's well thought out, and did you design it?
We did, yes.
Well, you did a great job.
Thank you.
It, I, I love it.
But they cut out the balcony on the back, I.
There could've been more, but.
I liked it a lot.
Well, anyway, I, I think it's great, and good job to everybody that was involved with it. And then the only thing, and I say it every year, uh, we've had some, I don't, we haven't hit a hundred yet, but it's been mid to high nineties, and keep an eye out on pets that you see outside, and with no shade, and check on your uh older neighbors, and especially ones you know that may not have air conditioning, or don't turn the air conditioning on. Just keep an eye out on them, and that's all I've got.
I've got nothing tonight.
Kendra, you have anything you'd like to say, share?
Just a couple of things, uh, coming home from Kansas City yesterday, drove over the lake, it really is up. It's like you could sit on the bridge and dangle your feet over it, it's just really awesome. Griffith Street, that's the street south of recycling. Uh, having granddaughters in softball and driving down that street, it's kind of like this. And I'm sure the city's tried to deal with it, but there are some, there are some fair sized potholes, especially south of the recycling center.
We can sure work on it, do, have we heard any more about that petition?
I mean, one thing about it, you're not giving any speeding tickets on that street.
We, we are, we are very hopeful, in the near future, we will be bringing you a petition with a hundred percent of the property owners to improve that street, so.
Good, thank you.
Just to wait for that.
And I, and the reason that, and when it is dry enough to do roadwork, we're out on it, and so yeah, it's bad, but it's, has friends that have, that are bad too, there's, it's, pier roads have some problems as well, and this rain, the rain doesn't help, and the rain makes it harder to get on them.
And then the third thing, those of us that are new to the commission, we need to be up to date on firework ordinances, because I am sure there will be some calls.
Can't shoot them after ten o'clock.
Well, I got my copy, just so I can go home and read it.
And one of the, just a little bit about fireworks, one of the things that the youth commission does, that um, I think has made an impact, they actually print off those regulations, dates, times, give them to the fireworks stands, who include them when you go buy something, and um, and so ongoing continuing work of the youth commission, and, and I, in my time living in El Dorado, the time that fireworks are shot is much closer to the regulations than it was when I came, and so, again, driven by the commission, um much, much better.
Okay. Nick?
Are we having uh fireworks display this year?
Yes, sir.
And if so, where and when?
We, we have it on the fourth, every year, the city's fireworks, I think, have been on the fourth every year, we've had them. There have been other ones around us on days, Saturdays and days before and stuff, but ours have always been on the fourth for my ten years. The commission has moved them around, um we've had them several places, we've had them out on the dam. In the beginning, they were actually, the city's fireworks were on Blue Stem Point. The city commission wanted them, so people in town could see them easier, so they've been in, at the dam, they've been at McDonald's Stadium, they've been at Prairie Trails, and they've been at, at Black, at BG. And so those are the four places that've been recently. This year, the Broncos have a game on the Fourth of July, it's parents' weekend, and um, I guess I'd suggest that you do it at McDonald's Stadium, but you can do them, we'll do them wherever you all wanna do them. The, the, every, you're supposed to burn native grasses every three or four years. The dam is getting burned a little more often than that, it's been burned annually in July for two years in a row. But be that as it may, we'll put them wherever you want, we'll shoot them wherever you wanna shoot them.
Sounds like the Broncos would be a good.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good venue to watch them too.
You're up close.
Mm-hmm, and you're in a seat, and it's a good view, so I would suggest coordinating with the Broncos to, to do that.
Agreed.
They shoot them on the field?
Actually, behind. Closer, you, it'd be, as you're at, it'd be in s- uh, center, right field, but they shoot them in the grass, behind the fence. You've got, you've got some.
Is it sunflower again? Is that the same guy?
Yeah, well, it's not sunflowers.
I know, it's what it used to be.
Rainbow.
Rainbow.
Rainbow?
Yes, same guy.
Okay.
Can you see the, do they have any of the, I didn't, where did we shoot them last year?
The dam.
Okay. Do they still have the fans that go back and forth?
I mean, they make them.
I mean, but can you, could you see them if they're back behind the fence? Cause they don't go killer hide, but.
Oh, you could see them.
They, we did them, last time we did them there, it was great, because you're so close.
Okay, that's cool, that's kind of what's fun, feel that concussion.
You feel it? I can attest to that. Anything else from the commission? I would say we've got coming up, um, on the seventeenth, the city night at the Broncos, as long as we're talking about the Broncos, uh, this Wednesday, uh, home game, and it's city night. I guess I would also like to uh, remind everybody that we've got, we're trying to do a retreat for the commission sometime in, after July first. What kind, I'd like to ask the question, I mean, it, it's a regular city commission meeting, as we'd all be together, and we'd be talking about business, I, some protocol about what that is, um, and how we do that, uh, as a commission, uh, with uh.
Uh-huh.
Legally.
It is a special meeting, and so it's open to the public, um, n- no one has ever come, but they're welcome, and so we will publish it, we'll do all those things for a special meeting, and it'll be a special meeting, and be open to the public.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that, everybody understood that.
Uh-huh.
Great. So I think probably at our next meeting, we'll start look, looking at their calendars to find out when that would be. Okay? Okay, do we have anything else?
I had just a couple of things I wanna.
See manager's report.
Um, talk about, um, we have had a tremendous amount of damage in the hailstorm, and our deductible is gonna probably amount to over a hundred thousand dollars. And so we don't have any work that has to be done today. Everything that had to be done has been done, and there were only a few things that had to be done, I think the most pressing one was the lights at, I think, Haverhill and Central, did we lose?
Haverhill and Tuanda.
Okay, Haverhill and Tuanda, and so um, you're gonna hear more about it, but, so you understand, we are gonna under, the, the state, the governor has declared an emergency for consideration for FEMA funding, the president has to do it, a determination is gonna be made now, and there's a meeting Friday we're gonna go to, but we won't, we're gonna understand the financial impact of all the work before we do any of the work, and we also are planning on um, we're, we're not in a big hurry, we don't have anything that has to be done today, so we'll let everything calm down and then do the work. I wanted to let you know that, um, but it's, it's a big number deductibles. But it's lots of, lots of damage, lots of roofs, this, this roof.
Water treatment.
Water treatment.
Police.
Police.
Um, some public works damaged.
Did we have them look at the rec center?
I, I know they went out and looked at it, but I don't know what that looks like yet, I, they talked about the civic center a little today, it's gonna need some work, so.
And twenty some cars?
Forty.
Forty cars?
Forty-three, actually.
So um, it, it's really hit us, but maybe we'll be all right. And that's all I had.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
We moved in second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, I vote we adjourned, thank you.